...Town Council on Monday, March 25, 2013. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in one nation, in one God, in one justice, in one law, in all.
Madam Clerk?
We have troop Brownie Troop 188.
Roll call for us, Madam Clerk.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's the roll call there. Oops, sorry. Counselor Gerlach?
Present.
Counselor Shabbat?
Present.
Counselor Lambert?
Present.
Counselor Roderick?
Present.
Counselor DiMederos?
Present.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yes ma'am.
Counselor Ruda?
Present.
Okay, now, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, we have Girl Scout Brownie Troop 188. Come forward. The troop leaders, Mrs. Sarah Gerlach and Mrs. Jennifer Mello.
Okay, all right, before you begin, I would like to ask Counselor Gerlach to read the proclamation.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. Proclamation, Tiverton Girl Scout Brownie Troop 188. Whereas Girl Scout Brownie Troop 188 is made up of eighteen girls from Tiverton and one from Westport, and the troop leaders are Mrs. Sarah Gerlach and Mrs. Jennifer Mello, and whereas Girl Scouts aim to empower girls and to help teach values such as honesty, fairness, courage, compassion, character, sisterhood, confidence, and citizenship through activities including camping, community service, learning first aid, and earning badges by acquiring other practical skills, and whereas the Girl Scout promise is to strive to serve God and country and to help people at all times by living the Girl Scout law, and whereas the Girl Scout law is to do their best to be honest and fair, friendly and helpful, considerate and caring, courageous and strong, and responsible for what they say and do, as well as respect themselves and others, respect authority, use resources wisely, and make the world a better place, and whereas Girl Scout cookie sales ran from the end of December through the end of March, and Troop 188 did their part to support our troops overseas by holding two cookie booth sales that were very successful, and whereas Troop 188 donated all of their cookie shares to the 2215 Brigade Advisor Team, 2nd Marine Division stationed in Helmand Province, Afghanistan, and will send approximately fifty boxes of Girl Scout cookies to local Marine Ryan Behan of Middletown to share with his fellow servicemen and women stationed in Afghanistan. Therefore, be it resolved that the Tiverton Town Council supports and applauds the achievements and talents of the Tiverton Girl Scout Brownie Troop 188, and be it further resolved that the Tiverton Town Council recognizes and congratulates Tiverton Girl Scout Brownie Troop 188 and encourages all Tiverton residents to support the programs and talents of all Girl Scouts. By the order of the Tiverton Town Council, March 25, 2013, signed Edward Roderick, Council President.
Thank you. I'm Sarah Gerlach, and along with Jen Mello, we co-lead the Brownie Troop 188. On behalf of Jen, myself, and the Brownies of Troop 188, I'd like to thank the Council for recognizing the troop's efforts to support our servicemen and women. I would also like to acknowledge our parent volunteer who coordinated our cookie sale, Jackie Costa, affectionately known as our Cookie Mom. Jackie took the lead. Yeah, go ahead and give her a shout out. Jackie took the lead in our Cookie Share Program, organizing the effort to send our Cookie Share boxes to local Marine Ryan Behan. Ryan is Jackie's nephew and cousin to one of our Brownies, Sarah, who's down right here. So many thanks go to her. Thank you, Jackie. We are fortunate to have some of our Brownies here tonight who would like to recite their Girl Scout promise for you and to share their thanks with the Council. Okay, girls, are you ready? On my honor-
Honor, I will try to serve God and my country, to help people at all times, and to live by the Girl Scout law.
All right. Thank you very much, girls. And I just want to let the girls, the Girl Scouts know that as late as our meetings do run, we may need these for nourishment.
Yes. This is a proclamation for Tiverton Library Month 2013. Whereas libraries are the heart of their communities, campuses, and schools, whereas librarians work to meet the changing needs of their communities, including providing resources for everyone and bringing services outside of library walls, whereas libraries and librarians bring together community members to enrich and shape the community and address local issues, whereas librarians are trained tech-savvy professionals providing technology training and access to downloadable content like eBooks, and whereas libraries offer programs to meet community needs, providing residents with resume writing classes, 24/7 homework help, and financial planning services to teens applying for student loans, and to older adults planning their retirement, and whereas libraries continuously grow and evolve in how they provide for the needs of every member of their communities, and whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week, which is April 14th through the 20th, 2013, and whereas Tiverton is soon to expand its 200 years of library services to break ground for a new energy-efficient library on Bogomash Road that will embrace all of the community in all of the ways described above, thanks to support from volunteers, the town, state, country, as well as foundations and private donations, including two fundraisers this month. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Tiverton Town Council proclaims Tiverton Library Month, April 2013, and encourages all residents to visit the library this month to take advantage of the wonderful library resources available at your library. Communities matter at your library. Adopted by the Tiverton Town Council, March 25, 2013.
Counselor Shabbat?
Do you want to present this to someone?
Yeah. Here. Proclamation, the Town Council, at its regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, March 25, 2013, by motion made and unanimously passed, did proclaim, at the request of the Tiverton Garden Club, Tiverton Spring Cleanup Week, Saturday, April 13 through Saturday, April 20, 2013. The kickoff for Cleanup Week commences on Saturday, April 13, 2013, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Grinnell's Beach on Main Road. DPW-approved green bags and gloves are available at the Essex Library, starting Monday, April 8. Sign-up sheets for a specific location or cleanup area of your choice will be available at Coastal Roasters and Essex Public Library, beginning April 2, 2013. Raffle and prizes will be given for those that attend the kickoff event on April 13. Tiverton Garden Club gratefully acknowledges the support of the DPW, Tiverton Litter Committee, Tiverton Town officials and staff, area businesses, and the dedicated volunteers who make this community-wide effort possible. By order of the Tiverton Town Council, March 25, 2013. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Council.
And to make it official, since it says that we made a motion and passed it, I will entertain a motion for this proclamation.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, Counselor Lambert?
Proclamation, Donate Life Month. Whereas one of the most meaningful gifts that a human being can bestow upon another is the gift of life, and whereas approximately 28,000 Americans received a life-saving or enhancing organ transplant last year, and whereas a new patient is added to the national patient waiting list for an organ transplant every ten minutes, whereas more than 110,000 men, women, and children are currently on the national waiting list for organ transplantation, of which approximately 4,000 are in New England, and whereas an average of eighteen people die every day awaiting, last year, awaiting an organ transplant that did not come in time, and whereas the Rhode Island Organ Donor Awareness Coalition is the volunteer-led, nonprofit organization diligently working to create awareness about and increase the number of registered organ donors in Rhode Island, and whereas the town of Tiverton supports the Rhode Island Organ Donor Awareness Coalition's life-saving mission, and whereas everyone is a potential organ, tissue, and blood donor. Therefore, we, the Town Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Donate Life Month in Tiverton, Rhode Island, to honor all those who have made the decision to give life, to focus attention on the extreme need for organ donation, and to encourage all Tiverton residents to consider giving life through organ donation, and to discuss that decision with their families. By order of the Tiverton Town Council.
Mr. President, may I interrupt for one second? I need to have a red Kia EQ 287 moved. They're blocking in the Girl Scouts. They can't.
Oh.
Thank you, sir.
Is anyone here to accept the Donate Life proclamation?
Thank you.
Thank you. We will wait for Counselor Ruda to move his car.
Yeah, I'll move that we, what is the, what are we, accepting and-
Accepting.
Accept the resolution as drafted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Counselor DiMederos?
I'd like to make a motion to bring three C Town Councils sitting as a Board of Licensing to the front of the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor?
C.
C3. C1.
C1.
Okay, the Town Council, sitting as a Board of Licensing. Robert Vitale doing business at East Coast Wholesale requests approval of fireworks permit at 1560 Bogomash Road, Route 177, Flea Market, from April 1, 2013 to July 4, 2013, subject to meeting all legal requirements. The recommendation of the Fire Department. Chief?
First officer.
Did you have a car to move?
We moved it forward.
Fire, we-
Again, please, chief. No.
We have inspected the property. We have met with him, and everything is in order at this time.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we grant the request for approval of fireworks permit at 1560 Bogomash Road for Robert Vitale, DBA East Coast Wholesale, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Vitale.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, business partner for the Council, our consent agenda. Approval of minutes of special council meeting, March 9, 2013. Approval of minutes of regular council meeting, March 11, 2013. No executive session held on March 11, 2013. Receipt of minutes of the following boards and commissions: wastewater management, Board of Canvases, Conservation Commission, Pecassett Cemetery Commission, Historical Cemetery Commission, Planning Board. Correspondence received and filed. Tiverton School Committee, legislation submitted by Representative Dennis M. Cunero regarding Education Equity and Property Tax Relief Act. City of Newport, resolution supporting legislation allowing technology, removing participation in video conferencing for advisory boards and working groups. Exeter Town Council, resolution in support of S. 0044 and H. 5072, acts relating to elections, eliminating single-party vote mechanism. Wesley Town Council, resolution opposing mandatory binding arbitration on monetary matters for teachers. Received from Samaritan of Rhode Island, acknowledgement of a donation. Town of Middletown, resolutions opposing mandatory binding arbitration legislation, opposing S. 365, S.-777, and H. 5699, mandating expired teacher, police, firefighter, or municipal employee contracts must continue at existing terms and conditions. Town Administrator, February Department reports, James Odell, drainage issue at Pecassett School, refer to the Town Administrator. Town Council Resolution opposing contract continuation litigation. Town Council Resolution opposing binding arbitration. Let's see, legislation. Town Council Resolution supporting Portsmouth Council letter opposing bridge tolls. Town Council Resolution supporting legislation to eliminate single-party master lever voting. Anything to be removed from the council agenda?
No, but I, I'm sorry, but I would just like to make a note that CA 1A, approval of minutes, special council meeting, March 9 should also be noted that Counselor DiMederos was absent, so she will be abstaining from that, just so she can vote on everything. Thank you.
All right, I will accept a motion on CA 1.
Or you could do it that way.
Yeah, just because that's the only one that has to change. CA 1.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Approval of the minutes of the special council meeting, March 19, with Counselor DiMederos abstaining. All those in favor?
Aye.
I will entertain a motion regarding the rest of the consent agenda.
Mr.- I'd also like to move off CA 5.
CA 5. Okay, drainage issue, okay. Okay, anything else to move off?
I move we approve all the consent agenda items save for CA 5.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor? Okay, Mr. Ruda, CA 5.
Yes, so CA 5, Mr. Odell put in a agenda request to, I believe, to discuss the drainage issue at Pecassett School. First question is, is why was this item placed on the consent agenda?
It's on the consent agenda because when we reviewed the agenda, Mr. Goncalo is going to have to speak with his DPW and maintenance, and none of that was done in time for this agenda, at least when the agenda was set up. So it's just kind of referring it for him to get his information together.
Would it be possible to briefly discuss the issue at hand of Pecassett School?
Certainly. When the building was built, the contractor redirected the water that was coming off Arbiter, I guess it's Arbiter Terrace. There were stairways there for children from that area to go to the school. So the contractor removed the stairs and, to divert the water, made a culvert or a sluice way to the back. That sluice way emptied into the baseball diamond for Little League. Okay. The school department had been notified since 2009, before this took place, while it was going on. They notified the school department on at least two occasions. When the school was finished, the water was flooding the baseball diamond, home plate. So opening day was about to happen, and nothing had been done. So I guess it was the Little League had blocked the sluice way so that it wouldn't flood the field. So what I did was I had our highway director go up and take a look at it to redirect the water. And he did some work up there to redirect the water. And the water, it didn't take the water completely away, so he went back and did it again, all right, and did more extensive, I don't know what you would call it, renovations or something, so that the water would be diverted back to Main Road where it originally was. Okay? And most of it, it all goes there. Now, the water that is back of the parking lot is coming from the school property and has no way to escape, apparently. All right, and that's the issue. But this was all caused by the contractor not properly diverting the water. And with that sluice way that was there, there was, there was no way to get to the field. As a matter of fact, we had an elderly woman fall trying to get down there. As a matter of fact, if I recall, even our town clerk fell once trying to get there. So that was the beginning of, you know, trying to get some of the situation straightened out. But it had, you know, had been brought to the attention of the school department long before the property was-
So it sounds like it's a bit of a safety issue, then? If someone has fallen, I mean, does that, I mean, that's, that's an adult, I don't know if-
That's been taken care of.
Okay.
The issue with that was Recreation had a fence there, and it had two openings in it. And Recreation gave the contractor permission to remove the fence so that he could work easily on that back parking lot. When he replaced the fence, he did not put any gates in it, no openings, and as a matter of fact, put a barrier across the back of the parking lot. So Recreation went in and put a gate in the fence-
Sure.
-and cut the barrier so that they could get through. So access has been taken care of.
Okay, so what we're going to do is we're going to take a look at figuring out what our options are and who's on point for resolving, you know, a better draining-
We're going to take a look at it, absolutely, but, you know, I feel that it's the responsibility of the school department because it's all on the school property, and we did what we could to mitigate the water coming from Garden Heights.
Sure. Is there any risk, is there any risk to the kids at all, like after a storm or anything like that? I don't, I haven't seen it personally, but I keep hearing about it.
I haven't seen it personally either, but I guess there's water spilling up in the corner of the parking lot.
I have seen it personally, oh, good.
Actually, I went to the Budget Committee site visit to the Pecassett School, and the water was from one side of the road to the other, and it was quite deep, and I think would, in effect, cause long-term damage to the parking lot and potentially the school. Now, whether it's the school's water or the town's water, it doesn't really matter, it's rainwater, and I think we need to work jointly in resolving this issue because the water has to go somewhere, and there's no other place on the school property where it can go. So there has to be a joint solution to get that water out of there because I believe it poses a safety threat to vehicles as well as schoolchildren. If that froze over, there'd be accidents going around that corner into the dumpster and everything else, and it's, it's really a safety issue, and it needs to be addressed.
Where does the water go before they rebuild the school?
All the way down Main Road.
From the parking lot?
No, I'm not sure where the water went from the parking lot.
Jim, speak into the-
I'm sorry, that was me. I asked where the water went before the school was rebuilt. I know that, I know that the two separate issues was the water coming from Garden Heights, and that had a little mini culvert that came down alongside the stairs and rock pile and went out to Main Road. But what was, what it sounds like is the blacktop is causing water to sink towards the east side of the property.
I think it may also be coming from some school drains. Mr. Odell was up there-
Gutters.
-and looked the whole situation over, and I'm sure he can answer where that water's coming from.
Briefly, I went with my engineer and my excavator, Mr. Clement Rose. I'm sure everybody in the room has either heard of him or knows him. He's been an engineer and an excavator and a septic system installer for over 50 years. He knows the topography of this area better than anyone. That aside, the problem is, for some reason, whoever did all the driveway and sidewalk work in that area, they designed the pitch to all head to the southeast corner. The correction made to the end of Arbiter Terrace is effective. I saw it on two occasions since the site visit, and it is effective. That water is all going towards Main Road at this time. However, the pitch of the driveways as well as the sidewalks is accumulating large-scale water all in the southeast corner. And Ms. Shabbat is right, it, it looked like a lake the day that we went for the site visit. The, the area was over 100 feet long, and behind the backstop, the water was so deep you couldn't even approach seeing the bottom. It was over 18 inches. The entire driveway was underwater, and the punchline to that is, is the last rain was four days earlier. There is evidence on the foundation of the school that the water has sat against it for a significant amount of time, and it is already undermining the driveway, and only a matter of time before it undermines the sidewalks as well. As a taxpayer, I would just like to add to that very briefly. As a taxpayer, we spent $10 million renovating that school only a few years ago. This is an emergency. I have it in my head since the site visit, if a small child trips on that sidewalk and lands face-first in that water and they drown, a mathematician won't be able to count all the zeros at the end of the liability check. It's, it's something that's got to be addressed. It's a simple fix of removing the water from that area to make the rec. department, the town, and the school department happy will cost $14,000 and the installation of a six-foot storm catch basin with 270 feet of 12-inch drain. The results are guaranteed in the estimate. And that's from Mr. Clement Rose. And I know with conversations with Mr. Ririk already, as well as I had conversations with Mr. Goncalo, who was good enough to show me all the correspondence over the last three years back and forth, Mr. Ririk is bringing this issue before the school committee tomorrow night and asking for half of the payment. I think it would go a long way in town and school relations if the town put the other half up and just solve the problem. Because if the town is my left pocket and the school is my right pocket, the money's still coming out of my wallet as a taxpayer at the end of the day. I'd just like to see the problem solved amicably, reasonably, and very quickly. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim. Mr. Odell.
I have a copy of the estimate. If- As a taxpayer, I would just like to add to that very briefly. As a taxpayer, we spent $10 million renovating that school only a few years ago. This is an emergency. I have it in my head since the site visit, if a small child trips on that sidewalk and lands face-first in that water and they drown, a mathematician won't be able to count all the zeros at the end of the liability check. It's, it's something that's gotta be addressed. It's a simple fix of removing the water from that area to make the rec department, the town and the school department happy will cost $14,000 and the installation of a six-foot storm catch basin with 270 feet of 12-inch drain. The results are guaranteed in the estimate. And that's from Mr. Clement Rose. And I know with conversations with Mr. Ririck already, as well as I had conversations with Mr. Goncalo, who was good enough to show me all the correspondence over the last three years back and forth. Mr. Ririck is bringing this issue before the school committee tomorrow night and asking for half of the payment. I think it would go a long way in town and school relations if the town put the other half up and just solve the problem. Because if the town is my left pocket and the school is my right pocket, the money's still coming out of my wallet as a taxpayer at the end of the day. I'd just like to see the problem solved amicably, reasonably, and very quickly. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim, Mr. Odell.
I have a copy of the estimate if, if, if I should-
Yeah, send that to Jim.
I also gave one to Mr. Ririck.
First of all, anything like that would have to be designed and advertised. It's a $14,000 project. And, and secondly, did you take into consideration hitting any ledge?
The possibility a ledge exists, which is why he elevated it to six feet. He originally wanted to go down 12 feet.
Okay. Well, I think the DPW should check all of this design figures before any numbers go out because there's a lot involved. So, just, just to verify them and reiterate the prices, but you have to, you know, use prevailing wages.
Right. I would have to go up to bid.
In an emergency, in an emergency situation, you can bypass that. However, I'm not opposed to that. But I would say in the meantime, to cut a hole in that man-made dam to get the water away from the school, I'll do it myself at my expense.
Jim, I think, I think you need to speak with Mr. Ririck and also with DPW. And either put together a bid packet and get that done as quickly as possible. And then in the interim, we'll can see what can be done to just alleviate the water in the interim. And I would expect that back prior to our next meeting.
Was there a suspicion to the, the water conditions before the schools were renovated? I played baseball back there back in 1900s. And-
Oh, then you're assuming that I played in the 1800s?
Well, you said it, not me.
It was always-
So I remember years ago when I played baseball there, that side of the field had always had that problem. So I don't, this, I don't think it's really such a new issue. I think that's always been the case. That side of the field has always been flooded.
Yeah, but we've never seen, I mean, until this new design scheme, we, I mean, I went to the Cassett School and I played soccer there and baseball and everything else. I don't remember ever seeing water, that much water accumulating in the parking lot. And maybe it was so many-
It was never in the park lot. Yeah. At that time, it was never in the park lot. But I, I also saw it the same day that Councilor Shabbat saw it. And I was like, oh my, holy cow. I mean, we could have actually swimming lessons in the back of the Cassett School. It was, it was that deep. I couldn't believe how, how large the water collection was. I couldn't believe it.
Any other discussion on this? And then I will entertain a motion that we instruct the town administrator to speak with the school administration and DPW to plan and go out for bid to alleviate the drainage problem there. And in the interim, do something to have that water runoff a little more quick, quickly so it does not build up.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I will entertain a motion regarding CA 5. No, that was to tell the town administrator.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Open public forum for announcements, comments, and questions. Mrs. Moran.
And here's the study. Yes, Moran, I'm just here to support the decision to pass the resolution.
Okay. I'm gonna ask you to begin again at the mic. Thank you.
Okay. I'm here to inform you or to help you make the decision to eliminate the, to pass the resolution to eliminate the master lever. There are 39 cities and towns in Rhode Island. Thirty-four of them have already passed this resolution. Rhode Island is the only ci, the only state in the United, in New England that has this. And of all of the 50 states in the United States, there's only 16 that have it. I think that we can think about how adequate it is when you think they call it the master lever. There isn't a lever anymore. And it is a total disenfranchising of the candidates. We talk so much about disenfranchising the voters, but this truly disenfranchised the candidates. Ken Block has done an extensive study on one town, Burlville. And if you want to see the, the statistics of that study, it's on masterlever.org. But what, two of the main things that were discovered was that the people that are most affected by the master lever or the single lever are the people like the candidates in Tiverton who have nonpartisan at the end of the ballot, the town council and the school committee. People don't understand the, the single, the master lever at all. They think that somehow if they, if they hit that, that their life is perfect and they can go home. However, if you're nonpartisan like we are in Tiverton, you still have an obligation to go ahead and do the rest of, of the parties or, or you're undervoted and those people don't get the advantage of your vote at all. I'm also on the board of canvassers and we see this as such a confusion to the whole process every, every election. What, another conclusion that was drawn is that most people think that by using the master lever, you're not voting for people, you're voting for a political philosophy, which isn't the case at all. And we hope that this will pass and the publicity of what the master level, lever is will be out there because it's gonna probably take a little while before it actually comes off the ballot. So this will not be just as something that's happening today or tomorrow. So we're hoping that the information that we're, that we're giving will help people understand what they're doing or not doing when they vote the master lever. Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you. Thank you.
Public presentations. Marcel Valois, Tiverton Business Park Economic Development Foundation. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the council. Marcel Valois, Economic Development Foundation of Rhode Island. I was here several weeks ago, but just to kind of recap that, that meeting. The town, I represent a private nonprofit development company. We specialize in business park development and we've been assisting the town administrator and your planning staff and Newport Chamber of Commerce to have a fresh look at the, at the business park at Fisher Road and, and Road 24. The town has an asset that represents about 170 acres of land at that intersection. It was initially conceived as a business park. This, the town working with the Newport County Chamber of Commerce or is able to get some federal monies to do some engineering. And over the last two years, really advanced the project in terms of understanding what you really have in terms of development potential. And in looking at that plan, they, they subdivided the parcel and it's about 100 acres, more or less, of net developable acres. After you take away the wetlands and the steep slope areas, about 100 acres that can actually be developed. And they created a subdivision plan that showed about a 61-lot subdivision with 40,000 square foot lots. The costs based upon engineering analysis showed that it may have, may require a $10 million investment in order to put all the roads, all the drainage, bring the sewer line, the gas line. And it's a pretty significant investment for a small town, obviously. When we ran some numbers to show the feasibility of that in terms of whether the town can in fact see a return on that investment, even taking into consideration tax revenues, it was a very marginal project, not something we would highly recommend. So we worked with the town and with your planning staff in identifying a modified version of the subdivision plan that created 21 lots, but they were bigger lots. And those sizes meet more or less the market demand from our experience in the industrial development business. But it also cut down the amount of infrastructure or public investment that the town would have to make closer to about $4 to $5 million range. Still a significant number for a small town. However, what we investigated over the last few months is whether or not federal money would be available to help the town defray that expense. And we found that through the Economic Development Administration, there may be, and I underline "may," depends on funding availability and all kinds of other issues, but there may be the potential for federal monies to support half that cost. So we were looking at whether the town, if it chooses to be a developer or chooses to take an active role in the development of that parcel, whether the, the town would support a $2.5 million investment to be matched by $2.5 million of federal funding to put all the infrastructure in place to make the project marketable. Today, it's not marketable because you don't have sewer up in that area, you don't have gas, you don't have all the basic services that companies typically require. At the last council meeting, you asked, you know, what kind of timeline are we looking at should we proceed in taking an active development role? And I wanted to highlight just that this is not your only alternative. Obviously, you can land bank the land and wait till the climate, economic climate gets better and maybe values will go up and more demand would, would create a more compelling reason for the development. You can go out and advertise the land as is to maybe a developer out there that may be interested in industrial development. Obviously, with the economy the way it is, we don't think there's a lot of folks out there, but I don't think it would harm the community to go out and request proposals to see if there's any interest. Fish the waters to see if there's anything out there. And the third proposal would be take an active interest in developing the land and identifying a resource to, to match federal funding to see if we can get the infrastructure improved. So what I did, including your package, I also brought a chart that shows the same information in the chart form. The approach to the project is four major areas. One of them would be, how do we get organized? If you, if you decide that you're gonna raise the money or find a way to pay for $2.5 million, how do we organize ourselves to actually take, take control of the development? The first step would be to identify someone that would help you in terms of actually applying for the federal funding. That's gonna require some effort. And we see the federal funding coming in two, two plays. One of them is a small grant, possibly in a $30,000 to $40,000 range, of which you have to come up with 50%. That would be for marketing work, to develop the marketing of the, of the park, the individual site plans, some renderings of the park, maybe a website to begin identifying what the, the highest and best uses feature of those parcels would be. EDA does fund planning grants. Again, it's matching funds, so if you applied for a $30,000 or $40,000 planning grant, you would have to identify $20,000. This schedule just shows that somebody would have to put that application in play. The second piece of this, should you decide, decide that you want to proceed with the project, is the bigger project and that is getting the $2.5 million of federal commitment. That's a much larger application process. You need someone to put that together. So there's an organizational piece of this that you have to invest in outside resources to help the town put those financial resources in, in place. The second piece is marketing. Obviously, a project of this sort would require ongoing marketing for a number of years. This is not a project that you, if you develop, that you can sell out in one year or two years. It's really a 10, 12, 13-year project based upon normal, normal sale rates in the industrial market. So there's a timeline here that basically shows submitting for an EDA application, accepting the grant, preparing the marketing plan, and ongoing marketing for the site. The other part is the EDA planning process itself. Typically, EDA works on a quarterly basis, so if you, you put your application in September, you, it would take about a month or two to get ready to submit that application for a September timeline. And it usually takes them a month or two to go through the process and do all of the, the ratings so that, because you're competing with the communities all over the country for, for that money. But if you should get a, a grant for, for the project, we see construction. I mean, there's a, you have to actually now go out for bids. You have to package the proposals. You have to review the bids and you have to go out to construction. All that would take close to a good part of a year to actually do, to actually go out to bid and actually oversee the construction of the project. So this timeline, and don't pay attention to the starting date, you can put any starting date you want here. I just put February because that's when I prepared it. But you're looking at, you know, a year and a half or two years of a, of a project timetable, actually prepare for the project, apply for the funding, receive the funding, supervise the construction, and begin marketing. And then again, the marketing period could go on for a number of years because we see this project as being a long-term project. It's not an overnight exercise. So I hope that that, you know, it just spells out briefly what the, what the process would be should you decide that you want to actively participate in the development of that project. So I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
I just have a quick question. So just so that I'm clear, if, and I agree that this is one of several options that are before us in terms of how we want to move forward. Hypothetically speaking, if we were to move forward with this particular scenario of trying to develop it ourselves, the next step, just so that I'm clear, the next step would be to commit to pursuing the planning grant? Is that?
The planning grant is something that I think you can do whether you decide to go forward or not with developing the park. I think it's, what I see in the planning grant is that each of those parcels, I think you can get an engineering company to actually identify a building on the site, show parking, make it look attractive, put everything on a website, make all the plans available on a CAD basis, a computer-aided design basis. All that stuff can be done in advance. You may actually entice some interest by doing that. So that, that grant process you can take whether you decide now or not to actually take an active role in the development.
Thank you.
I have one. Obviously, the big beef is what's going on in Washington. And we don't know if long-term, if these types of fun, funding are going to be impacted on. So are there any, I know nothing is a guarantee, but are there any inklings that such funding will continue to be around?
No, there's no, no guarantee, but the Economic Development Administration, which is under the U.S. Department of Commerce, is notorious for riding under a, what they call a continuing resolution. They've been scheduled for extinguishment now for 30 years, but they seem to always survive because every time there's a hurricane or a disaster, a lot of the federal money gets channeled through the EDA in order to fund some of these improvements. So they always seem to be around. But again, with the, with the recent talk in, in Washington about cutting expenses, I can't, I can't tell you what the future holds. I can tell you that public works-type grants are probably there. That's the most prevalent grant program they have. They like giving up public works dollars. And it, it requires that the applicant has a firm commitment of matching funds. And there's so few communities that can do that. So if you can get to the gate with the matching funds in hand, you have a very high likelihood to get awarded because they, they really like giving out public works grants. They like to be able to put things into the ground. So I can't really answer the question, Mr. President, long-term, whether the funding will be around, but I think this type of project is something they like to fund.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No. Laura. It's not an open hearing.
I know it's not.
Are you gonna be brief?
I'm always brief.
I know.
Laura, okay. I am a member of the Budget Committee, but this is budget-related, but I'm not speaking for the Budget Committee. Just some clarification. There are two pieces to this. There's a planning grant and then there's a grant for matching funds. Can you think of them separately?
Yeah, both entail matching funds.
Right.
Right. But, but one, one would require on our part a bigger commitment, i.e. bonding or something.
$2.5 million.
Right.
So if I'm, if I'm thinking of the budget request for next year is six, this budget request is 60,000. 20,000 would be for the planning grant. 40,000 would be for the infrastructure, $2.5 million grant part. Can they be thought of separately? Are they two distinct projects?
Yes.
Mr. President, in the conversations with the, the administrator regarding the budget, there was a question raised that how much money would it require to do some of the upfront organizational work that we talked about and to match the, the planning grant?
Right.
So if the planning grant component is 40,000, then you would have to have $20,000 in the town budget to match the federal grant. The other- The other forty thousand was to provide the town--
The cost of services.
At their discretion, to hire services should they decide to apply for the federal grant. How are you going to pay for the services to prepare the application? It's technical services that would be required that you would engage in order to bring the project forward. So if there's a forty thousand dollar line item in that budget, at your discretion, to fund outside services. So it's forty and twenty would be the sixty.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vala.
Thank you.
Landfill Recycling Subcommittee Council Update.
Okay.
Okay.
Good evening. You have before you a rundown of our presentation tonight. It outlines the number of years the landfill's been in operation, current licensing, recycling rates for the past number of years. It also has rubbish tonnage. And at this point, we are estimating a closure date of 2018.
I just want to do some clarification because out in the world, they don't have these numbers. On the recycling rate from 2012, going back to 2008, if you could just give those numbers and show how it's changed and the reasoning behind it.
When we start, yeah. In 2008, that's when I came here. Anyhow, recycling rate was nineteen percent and holding steady. Nothing seemed to work as to any programs that were put into effect up until then. At that point in time, we received some pressure from the state in setting guidelines where by 2012, we had to be at a recycling rate of, minimum recycling rate of thirty-five percent. And that recycling rate is only for the plastics, bottles, and cans that were going to Resource Recovery and being weighed, and we compared that to the estimated amount of trash in our landfill for that particular timeframe. So we thought hard and proposed to the then-town council and some of the sitting members three programs to try to achieve that thirty-five percent minimum. And the first thing we did in 2010, 2009, in February, we instituted recycling fees, and we took the mattresses, box springs, tires, wood, metals, computers, all that sort of stuff out of the landfill and found recycling resources to recycle them, and we charged the residents those recycling fees to offset the costs. So we came to a balanced position where it didn't cost the town any money. Yes, it did cost our taxpayers, but they received that service, and we gained life in our landfill by doing that. A few months later, in October of '09, we instituted a no bin, no barrel. That kicked us up three percent. So we started at nineteen. The recycling fees kind of kicked us up to twenty-two, and then no bin, no barrel kind of got us up to twenty-nine percent in 2011. And with the pay-as-you-throw in the single stream in 2012, although we don't have the hard numbers, we're estimating we're going to be at thirty-six percent recycling rate. In the converse, the rubbish volumes in 2010, and this is by survey, were sixty-three hundred tons. It was reduced to five thousand tons in 2011, and it was reduced further to, we're estimating thirty-six hundred tons in 2012. So you can see what the programs that we recommended be instituted and you instituted, what the effects they have gained. And it's also kicked the closure date from, they were saying, 2015, 2014, when I got here, so we're up to 2018, you know, plus or minus. I think there's been some confusion on closure costs. Now, we've hired an expert, we pay him sixty thousand dollars a year, PAR Engineering, to advise us on the best methods and the most cost-effective methods to close the landfill at some future dates. They've come up with four options. Those options are based, basically, on giving us choices when that time comes as to what materials may be more expensive, we may go with this option. You know, another option may have a lot of petroleum cost to it with a blanket of plastic over it and hauling cost. So there's four options. At some point in time, the town will decide which one to pursue based on the cheapest, and we'll present that option to DEM for approval when the landfill is ready for closure. At this time, under two thousand eleven dollars, it's going to cost eight to ten million dollars to close the landfill in 2018. Now, what hasn't been discussed in our whole discussion is inflation. We've never really put in an inflation cost. My thought was, if we're making three percent interest on our money, we should also conservatively should put in a three percent inflation cost of what the closure is going to be in 2018. I mean, I think that's kind of common sense. It could go the other way, but I think common sense is leading me to believe it's going to be higher. So those costs wash. So we hit 2018, we got five million in the bank. We're collecting four fifty a year for five years. We're at seven point two five million bucks in real dollars right now. So that's who we have to compare. What we need is eight. What we have in five years in real dollars is seven point two five. You following my math or my thinking here? So in my opinion, we're short three quarters of a million dollars. Now, these eight and ten million dollars are so soft because the variables that could change those numbers are so out of our control, namely gasoline and the cost of petroleum. That's a big cost, so that's the big elephant in the room. You can pick a number and support it, and I'd say maybe, and you could pick a number. They've kind of did the best engineering analysis fiscally and closure-wise that they can, and so these are the numbers that we are looking at, that I feel anyhow. Post-closure, after it's closed, sixty-two grand a year is going to cost us to maintain a closed landfill. That's monitoring water, monitoring methane gases, security, cutting the grass, and all the other aspects of what goes into what we agreed to do when they gave us our license back in 1977. So we've bought into that. As far as planning goes, as we approach that closing date, we'll know, I'd say, a year and a half beforehand or so when it's coming. We have to start, we have to start to validate plans, specs, estimates, bid proposals, and permitting because we don't have much time after closure to start construction of the So we have to, you know, the excuses could be, oh, the landfill's closed, now we need two years to get all this stuff done. No, 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 no. You're going to get it done beforehand, have it ready when you're ready for closure, advertise, close it. Construction is going to be about six months to close it, and then we start the monitoring process. Up until now, we've been pretty lucky. What it costs to pick up your rubbish every single week is two dollars a week. That's what it costs the rubbish company to come to every single home in town every week, two bucks. So if you look at it, you know, what it costs, it's pretty a cost-effective method of getting rid of your rubbish. Fortunately, now it goes to our landfill. Later on, it's going to be going to Johnston. So we're going to have to address that five years out. I think that's about, we have one hundred and twenty-five acres, we only occupy thirty-three, so we're going to have to cap the thirty-three. But between buffer zones and wetlands and everything all around, it's a big chunk of property out there. So what I've given you, not only, and it's available for the public, is copies of this cover sheet and is copies of the closure plan. This is the document submitted to get a landfill license renewed to DEM. It's a operations plan, it's a groundwater monitoring plan, it's a closure plan, which you have kind of copies of behind that maybe you can read at a later time, and post-closure monitoring plan. So that's who we had to submit, that's who we have to go by. But I'm hoping this will kind of get everybody on the same page and an understanding of what we're hearing out there and what's been reported. This is up-to-date as of March 2013. This is the most up-to-date last-week thing that I got, so other than that--
Well, Mr. Belucci, Mr. President, I'd like to just make a brief remark as the liaison for the landfill committee. And I've spoken to Mr. Belucci and Mr. Rice about the comments that I would make. And believe me, these are not meant to be in any way critical. Mr. Belucci, Mr. Rice, and I appeared at the Budget Committee, what was it, three weeks ago? And at that time, members of the Budget Committee indicated that they had seen estimates that the closure would be eight point zero, eight million. And one estimate was that it would be eight point five million. When we left, I asked Mr. Belucci and I asked Mr. Rice, where did they come up with those numbers? I've never used a number of less than nine million. Since then, I've received a couple of phone calls and a couple of documents. And really, what I'd like to do is just consider this very, very briefly so that we are, as Mr. Belucci says, all on the same page. One of the documents I received, and I think that this helps explain what the issue is, it's a document prepared for the Budget Committee dated March 7th, 2013. So I assume it's up-to-date. And it makes the following comment, and I'm quoting, "Closure cost. The most recent estimates for capping the landfill assume that the landfill will reach capacity during 2017 and that the capping cost will be approximately eight point five million dollars. Estimates are based on information from PAR Corporation, who completed a feasibility study presented to the town council on February 27th, 2012, and is currently working on the town's landfill license renewal," which Mr. Belucci has just referred to." That's what I was interested in finding out where that number came from. Referring to the report that was submitted to the town council on February 2017, I just want to read from that report, and it'll be brief. Because I do want to make sure we're all on the same page and nobody has the impression as perhaps in an overreaction, I assume some people were making the suggestion that we were a little loose with our numbers. But I'm referring to the PAR report, which is referred to in the Budget Committee memo of March 7th of this year. The quote, page one, "The purpose of this evaluation was to identify a cost-effective post-landfill solid waste management program for the town of Tiverton. As it stands today, the town's landfill is scheduled to close between 2017 and 2018." On page six, "Landfill closure cost. PAR is currently updating the town's landfill licensing documentation. As part of that licensed documentation, PAR is updating the landfill closure cost. PAR's opinion of probable construction cost to cap the landfill in twenty-eleven dollars is approximately eight million dollars." Refer to Table 1. "It should be noted that this is a rough order of magnitude cost." But they clearly indicate it was based on dollars for 2011, not 2018. They make the same representation in the schedule that's attached. On page eight, they indicate, and I think this is absolutely correct, "According to the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index, the average rate of increase for the cost of construction projects is three point three since 2005. Therefore, assuming a similar rate of inflation between 2011 and 2018, the cost to close the landfill on January 1st, 2018 would be approximately nine point seven billion dollars." In paragraph 3.2.4 of the same report, page eight, "In 2018, the cost to close the landfill is estimated to be approximately nine point seven million." On page nine, the reference is again made to 2011 as eight million dollars in twenty-eleven dollars, and twice the indication is that the cost in the year 2018 will be nine point The last note that I've highlighted here indicates under the heading, and this was a separate subject, "Direct Hall," it indicates, again, "Currently, the landfill is scheduled to close near the end of 2017. For this evaluation, we assumed capping would begin January 1st, 2018." Mr. Belucci has now provided the most recent report from PAR Engineering, and that report is dated revised March 2013, so I assume within the last two or three weeks. And I'm reading their conclusion from page 13. "PAR's opinion of probable construction costs for the construction," and now they're referring to the 2018 number, "of the final cover system is between eight million, twenty-seven thousand, and ten million, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, or about two hundred and forty-seven thousand to three hundred and thirteen per acre of cap." In short, I just wanted to assure everybody that there is no magic number at this point. And again, I'm not saying this critically at all. I just don't want a misunderstanding in four or five years. The estimates that we have given have been roughly in the area of eight point five to nine point seven until we received this report. And now, based on the PAR engineering, the estimate is now roughly between eight million and ten million. Again, as I say, I simply want to make it clear for the taxpayers, the people who are going to have to pay this in five or six years, what the numbers are that we've been looking at over the last year and a half or so in putting this pay-as-you-throw program together. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Anything else?
Okay, I just have a question. As I was reading both reports, and they're talking about the gases, does anybody else have a recapture, you know, on the methane where they bottle it and sell it?
I think our landfill is very, very small compared to landfills, you know? And we've looked into kind of reconstituting, and people have come to our meetings with different methods of trying to either make it last longer or make it last forever or whatever. And it comes down to the size. It's thirty-three acres, and it's really tiny. So to set up a methane recovering system-- So to set up a methane recovering system and such, you know...
It just doesn't generate enough methane to be profitable.
Not enough, no, not enough. We have to monitor it, obviously, but it's not going to be a moneymaker, you know, with just a small landfill like we have, so.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. It's not really related to closure. But after closure, what's this going to look, what's the landfill going to look like? Is essentially going to be an open space?
Open space, grass. We have to mow the grass. We have to take care of any litter. We have to keep it secure. I imagine it'll have the methane pipes sticking up, the four-inch PVCs with the hooks on the top, and that's a plan.
And that's just the 33 acres? The rest, the remainder is natural, whatever it is now?
Just like it is now, yep.
Mr. President, I just had a quick question. So if we're up to 36%, how do we compare compared to other, you know, like-sized municipalities in terms of our recycling rate?
I think we're probably 60% up the pack. There's some, but, you know, I don't know how they get their numbers either. I know Middletown next door has numbers that blow you off the chart, but I don't know how they get their numbers. But I get my numbers by the formula I was told to use by Resource Recovery. There's another one coming down where we have to take and find the percentage of all the waste that we divert, you know, yard waste, we divert, everything else beyond what I said before, the mattresses and bark springs, what else do we, all the brush we cut up. And there's other stuff. So when you add all that together, we have to be at a diversion rate that would be higher than the recycling rate because it takes into account all that other, you know, the metals that we sell and this and that.
Sure.
And I think we haven't met that criteria. I believe that's supposed to be at 50% in 2012. I calculated we're at 40, so... But we don't really interface with Resource Recovery in there, you know, in anything other than bringing our recycles there. So we're an odd kind of character compared to the rest of the communities in the state.
Sure.
We have our own landfill.
I was just curious if you thought we might be plateauing, is it related to the recycling rate, or is there still opportunity to increase that?
We've discussed that, and we can't really come up with, you know, any, you know, you can always raise the price of the bag so outrageously that people will be afraid to put stuff in, you know? But some communities do that, and they drive their community to shop, to shop in a sense of environmentally friendly. What they buy, they don't have to throw away, you know? So that's a whole other mindset that I think we have to... And to get that, you can't get that, I feel, by advertising or workshops. It's dollars. You saw how the numbers went up when it came to dollars, pay-as-you-throw versus recycling. So, I mean, that's the only way, you know, if substantially I could fathom getting any higher. I just don't know how to do it, you know? Unless you take businesses in. If you only take all the businesses recyclables, man, our numbers will go way, way up. We don't take their rubbish. So, man, I can get the numbers up if you want to do that, but there's a cost to that. Businesses would love it, but that's a thought. Maybe that's a possibility.
Do we sell composting bins?
Compost bins, yeah. We get them from Resource Recovery for $40, and we sell them for $40, yep.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Steve. Thanks, Will. Good. Advertise Public Hearings, Small City Community Development Block Grant, Second Public Hearing, Community Development Block Grant Application, Christian Beldon, Church Community Housing.
Good evening, councilors. As you noted, this is the second of two public hearings for the Community Development Block Grant Program. I'm sure you remember, the first hearing was advertised in the newspaper. The purpose was to notify the citizens of Tiverton, of the town's intention to apply for these funds and to notify them of the opportunity that, you know, if they were interested in applying for the funds, that they could. Since then, I've been working with the town administrator and other town staff, as well as receiving applications from various agencies in the area to put together the list of proposed activities that you have before you. There's a $300,000 maximum to be applied for through this program, and the town is at $300,000 with these activities. I'll just run through the lists quickly. The first is for extension of the sewer lines and associated streetscape improvements in the North Tiverton area. That's $185,250. The second is to renovate the Bayview Recreational Facility for $50,000. The third is to provide funding to East Bay Community Action Program for operating support for their health and dental services that they provide at their new facility in Newport. That's $5,000. Support for the Women's Resource Center for their housing and community services related to domestic violence for $5,000. Operating support for the Community Housing Resource Board, the Housing Hotline of Newport County, to provide housing counseling and education outreach to affirmatively further fair housing in Newport County for $3,750. $3,000 for the Community Housing Land Trust of Rhode Island for education, training, technical assistance, and monitoring affordable housing units. $5,000 for the St. Elizabeth's Community Cornerstone Adult Services, Nancy Brayton Osborn Adult Day Center, provides adult day health services to frail elders and adults with disabilities and those with Alzheimer's disease and related dementia. $3,000 to the Social Venture Partners Rhode Island to expand its online micro-enterprise incubator into Newport County. And I'd add that they're proposing to work with our organization to come up with a micro-enterprise loan fund because we have our home improvement loan that we administer. So we already have in place the staff and the capacity to do application and loan origination. So this would couple nicely with that activity. And in addition to that, that's for $3,000. And then lastly, $30,000 to support our various housing activities, including the home repair loan for closure prevention, down payment assistance, home buyer training, and other housing-related activities that we perform. And then lastly, $10,000 for the town for town administration. So just to go over roughly the town's projects and the administration expenses, total $245,250 of the $300,000 that's being applied for.
All right, this being...
I'd also just like to add that once the public hearing is closed, you have the opportunity to vote to authorize submission of the application. And you also, as the council, can change the priorities, the prioritization of these activities if you so choose. They've been arrived at through collaboration with the town administrator.
Okay, this being a public hearing, we won't hear from anyone from the public at this
My name is Joe Sousa, 49 Hancock Street, and I'm a member of the Budget Committee. We heard the senior center over the last few years has been talking about a commercial kitchen. I know in Middletown, the senior center, they're able to raise a lot of money. They actually sell at lunch every day, things like that, and it's able to raise money for the senior center. Our kitchen in our senior center is basically noncompliant with the fire code, so basically alls they can do is microwave some pop-tarts or something. I mean, it's, we can't really do much in that kitchen there. And I know it's not really a strong priority, but this is another year that I see the grants seem to be going all to the same projects. And there are other needs in the town that I think aren't being addressed, and that was one. They were looking for $50,000. Now, I don't, I'm not sure where that number came from, but, I mean, if we could get a start over there, perhaps by purchasing maybe a convection oven, you know, it would be a start, maybe $15,000 or $20,000 to get them started over there. I know there are other priorities, but that was just something I thought should be considered.
Thank you, Mr. Sousa. Anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing none, I will close that portion of the hearing on the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant and open it up for the council.
Mr. President, I just have a question. Mr. Beldon, I know we've hit the $300,000 cap here. How many other applications were submitted that...
These are all of them, actually.
Okay. So to Mr. Sousa's comment, was there an application put in by the senior center? No, there wasn't.
I would add that it would be an eligible activity to apply for. You're up to $300,000 women now, but we could certainly slate it for next year's application. I know the town has applied for senior center activities in the past. They were recently awarded some funds for the senior center to rebuild the ramp leading into the facility, so the senior center certainly is an eligible facility.
Just a thought, was there a particular reason why we submitted for it? I don't know.
I didn't receive anything from Janice along those lines.
All right, seeing no further discussion.
Just one question, sorry, Christian. Historically, in the last couple of years, what's the level of funding we've received? I know we don't get $300,000 every single year, but how close do we get to that number?
Tiverton does very well relative to the other communities that we assist in Newport County. Typically receives in the ballpark of $100,000 for the North Tiverton activity. And generally, the items that you see here, the Women's Resource Center, East Bay Cap, the Community Housing Land Trust, those activities have been funded at about the amounts that you see here. And then the town, you know, sometimes applies to the senior center or there are other town activities that come out. So it's usually between, it's hard to say because it varies every year, and off the top of my head, I can't remember the exact number from last year, but I want to say it was about $175,000 or $185,000 last year.
Sounds about right.
Is that right, Jim?
$167,000.
$167,000. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Christian.
Any other questions?
I really think we really need to consider some monies for the senior center. If it's not for a convection oven, then they really need a refrigerator. They tape it closed. They probably thought that they could put in the budget process, but if there's grant money available, then I think we should perhaps take the second item for the Bayview Recreational Facility and split the difference. Just a thought.
And so a question regarding the protocol, so we would need to fast-track an application for that, or...
It's really your prerogative. If that's what you chose to do, you certainly have the opportunity here to make that decision, and I'll revise the activities. It'll take a little work with the senior center to get the backup documentation. You have to have an estimate from a contractor or a vendor for the improvements that you're proposing to make, and there's narrative and stuff. I mean, I basically prepared the individual applications myself, and so I would, I'd certainly do that.
When does this have to be submitted by?
April 19 is the deadline for our submission.
Ms. Shabbat, could you repeat again what your proposal is, just so I have it clear?
Well, just item number two is for the recreational facility, Bayview Recreational Facility. Just thinking if we could just split the difference between that and the senior center. I certainly know they need a, they desperately need a refrigerator. They tape it closed, and they have to monitor the temperature. They can't even keep it open that long because they have to monitor the temperature because it can't go below a certain temperature. So they're desperately in need of a refrigerator.
So just so we're understanding, are you saying that the Bayview Recreational Facility, $25,000, and the senior center, $25,000?
Yeah. I think...
That was my question.
That's just a thought. I think if Mr. Goncalo...
Because we'd have to at least quantify what that $25,000 would be for.
Yes. And I was unaware of the fact that you had to tape the refrigerator closed. I certainly would take some of that money and put it toward the senior center. But also, we need to keep in mind that playground equipment is very expensive. So, I mean, we certainly can share the money to some extent, but I'd have to talk to the senior director. I can do that in the morning.
I know, but we need to, because our next meeting will be April...
April 8.
April 8. And I don't know if that would give you enough time if we waited till April 8 with changes, you know, with the submission date of the 19th.
Well, I could certainly contact Mr. Beldon before that with some figures.
If I could make a suggestion, Ms. Shabbat, since we really don't know the extent of what we need at the community center, at the senior center, that I would say $40,000 for Bayview and $10,000 for the senior center, that at least we know will take care of a refrigerator and an updated convection oven.
Will we have to the April 15 meeting? Since the deadline would be the 19th, you said?
Right, but he still has to prepare it and get it out to them.
He's a young guy.
At that point, I'd generally like to have the applications complete and be going around to the towns for final signatures. Waiting till the last moment is risky. You know, I like to get them submitted, but it's possible.
Mr. President, perhaps could I offer a compromise that we authorize up to $15,000 for the senior center, depending on, you know, subject to what Mr. Goncalo can work with the director to prior, cost out and prioritize?
Is there any wiggle room in the North Tiverton State Avenue, Fish Road, Hooper Street, Main Road, stairways, streets, pathways, extension of sewer lines, etc.? I mean, that's $185,000 if there's some wiggle room.
In that area, we do with what we get.
You don't get the $185,000.
Oh, I know.
They utilize every dollar they get there.
Right, right. And generally, what happens is we're limited to $300,000. We take these other items, we subtract it, and what's left is what goes to that first item. Okay? So it's a situation where, yeah, we could certainly take some money out of there as well.
I'm not talking about a lot of money.
No, I mean, if we're talking about $10,000 or $15,000, it's...
I'm not even talking about that much.
I mean, I don't know what a refrigerator and another stove would cost there, but I don't know. My wife buys all those things, so...
Well, I think it depends on, you know, we're not talking like residential, commercial, gray.
Probably at least $5,000 for a stove.
Thank God she doesn't spend that kind of money.
Restaurant-style type of equipment.
They don't have the ventilation facilities for commercial soup.
I mean, obviously, what we'd have to look at is that if you're going into full-scale appliances, that kitchen is not set up for that. So now you're talking about structural and other things. So I'm suggesting that there are things that can be done with $10,000 or $15,000.
I agree.
And without having to either demolish or reconfigure or whatnot. So that would be my suggestion, that I will take your compromise at $15,000, reduce the Bayview Recreational Facility by 15.
Well, how about if we were to reduce the improvements to sidewalks, stairs, pathways by 15? And the reason why I say that is, you know, we bought a very small playground piece of equipment for...
Bogamash.
Bogamash, and that cost $40,000. So...
All right, then I want to, tandem motion, that we reduce the $185,250 by $15,000 and submit a request for the senior center for kitchen equipment, i.e. refrigerator, stove, for $15,000.
Second.
We have a motion in the second discussion?
Yeah, just a question. Is it a little bit easier to say up to those amounts so that in the event that...
You know, we get it cheaper.
You know, Jim comes back to us and says, well, 50 for a commercial kitchen, but we can squeeze by with X for some appliances in the meantime and then make a priority next year or whatever. I mean, if it's a commercial kitchen... Because, I mean, if it's a commercial kitchen, that's pretty much all or nothing because they don't have the ventilation and the et cetera to support that just yet. So we can't do piecemeal.
So we can modify, I'll take a notification of motion to up to $15,000.
Sure, I'll make a motion to modify, amend the motion to stay up to $15,000, be taken from item number one.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, and more discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Jim, you'll work with Chris and do whatever you need to do to get the proper line items written up.
Yeah, we're gonna need another vote to approve this.
But he's gonna need it to at least put it together.
He's gonna need a vote now.
Oh, no, no, no. Yeah, but I'm just saying, for you to get the info to him.
Can the vote not to put him under a lot of pressure? Because it's gonna take us a few days to get estimates, okay? Can the vote be?
Not till midnight.
Okay. I'll start now. Can the vote be so that we can move forward with it as long as it's $15,000 or less?
Yeah.
Okay. And we'd be talking about a stove, a refrigerator, and any other minor improvements that would be needed to work along those lines.
Up to $15,000.
Right.
All right, I want to take a motion that we approve the community development block grant with the changes already specified.
So moved.
Second. Motion a second, all those in favor? Motion carries.
I have two questions. One is, what priority number should I have the senior center, this new senior center activity at? Is that two or three?
I think that would become three.
Becomes three?
It becomes three.
And then the other thing is that the application cover page asks that the town administrator be authorized as the.
Signature.
As the person, yeah, for the signature, exactly.
Yes, that will continue as it has in the past.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Continuing, advertised public hearing. Public hearing on proposed town code changes to Chapter 10. Animals propose amendment will revine Section 10-33 to clarify the status of dogs roaming at large and to provide refuse for the cost of boarding any dog impounded by the town.
Mr. President, I have a couple of comments on this section. I'll make them brief. Basically, what this would do is actually require a police officer, the word is shall, shall impound. It would require a police officer in the town of Tiverton to impound a dog anytime a leash is not being held by the owner, a keeper, or person in charge of the dog, or custody of the dog. I'm not so sure that we really need the police doing this. I mean, here's a possible scenario that I see every day on Naniquoket Road. Somebody's walking the lab, and they drop the leash so Rover can run up and down the street by himself. I mean, do we really want the police to be under some obligation to actually impound that dog at that point? I think the way this, I understand, it's well-intended, but I think it's a little broad. I was gonna suggest that the shall language on subsection B be changed to may, so that there's some element of discretion here. But also, I wouldn't have the definition of found at large to include anytime the dog is not, the leash isn't being held by an owner. That is, I would have language that the dog may be impounded if he's not under the control or supervision of the owner, keeper, or person having charge or custody. I just don't want something ridiculous happening, like somebody drops the leash, which happens all the time, every day, in any number of streets in Tiverton, just to let the dog run around for a few seconds. And at least as I read this, but you'll correct me, Chief.
Absolutely.
As I read this, the police officer driving by now has to impound the lab and take him away, and I don't think I've read it overly broad.
I agree with you that we should not make it shall. There should be a discretionary value there. The fact is that you can't take away the power of the police completely where someone can say that dog's under my control, where it obviously may or may not be. Then taking into consideration other people are frightened of animals and may have the concern that way. Under the control, I think on a leash is, in today's society, I think is reasonable.
All right, this being a public hearing, which we haven't been really to the council portion yet. Yes, Mrs. Pelletier?
Yes, Barbara Pelletier, and since responsible dog ownership is up for discussion, I just thought I would add my few points.
Please, please use the microphone. Thank you.
Okay. And I think it's great, and I think we're moving in the right direction. My thought was, though, all along, that perhaps we should have a limit as to the number of pets per household, at least dogs. Most towns do have that. Most towns around here do have a limit of three or four. So that's something that we should consider, because that then brings into the whole play registering the dogs. And if statistics show us that about 50% of all households in the United States have a dog, there are about 5,000 living units in Tiverton, I believe, households. So theoretically, somewhere in the town, we're taking in $2,500, $2,500 dog registrations at $10 apiece, what, a dollar of which goes to the fail cat account, remember, that you gave me so generously? But in any case, it's a way of keeping tab on the whole situation, because state law, federal law, tells us that rabies vaccinations are mandatory, and unless you know how many animals there are in a sense, and point out to the citizens that, okay, so you have a pet, be responsible, the $10 rabies shots every three years isn't gonna kill you, you know, work with it, or else don't have a pet. I think we can't really mandate it, but if we get the message out, gee, you know, register your dog, we wanna know about it in Tiverton, we like dogs, just get it out there. Your dog counts for us. You know, just something positive, not the negative way. And I totally think we're going in the right direction. I'm trying to be very positive about this whole thing. I think it might help, and I know there's absolutely no way of counting cats and all of that and seeing that they have rabies shots, we just don't have the manpower. And spot checking for cats every so often might help, but who knows? That's one of my points. The other point I realized over the weekend, and I think most of us saw the story on the news where the dog, the dead dog was found in Fair Haven, dumped on the side of the road in a plastic bag, which is horrid. I do agree with that. But I think we have to give, if any one of you had lately had a dog put down and had to pick up the, even the, the cost of having it cremated, even just the euthanasia is expensive. There are some people out there who just cannot afford to dispose of their dog through cremation. It's, and living in an apartment, there's absolutely no way that they can bury it anywhere. And as a matter of fact, I do believe when I was attending the meetings at the Rhode Island Foundation on the animal thing, actually legally, you can put a dog's cadaver in the trash, which is not a happy thought. So I thought, Tiverton being a nice and friendly town, could we have a pet cemetery? We have tons of little, lots of land that aren't usable for anything. Right? Right?
I'll leave this to the assistant town solicitor. I think you need an ordinance for that, am I correct?
I would imagine that's a Department of Health issue, Mr. President. I don't know personally, but I would imagine that at a minimum, you'd need a Department of Health.
Well, I think people with land usually bury their pet in the yard. I don't know if that is actually permissible under the code, I don't know. But I think most people do, and I don't think we wanna really enforce that.
I would question whether that's allowable as well.
Yeah, but, well.
That's going far afield.
I will have dog officers called to Port of Health ascertain if we can have something and give you a clear direction on that.
Well, that's something that really I don't care to even think of enforcing, because I do, we have enough land so that we have a pet cemetery. But some people are not happy, and what I was trying to say is.
Mrs. Pelletier, we're really talking about this leash thing, so.
Yes. Well, in any case, I do believe that maybe we can put a limit on the number of pets in the future per household, like most communities around. And I did call around, and almost everyone does have that. And then try to get the message of responsible ownership and registering your dog, because it does bring in money into your coffers to offset any maybe future pet cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief?
If I may, I think the fact that we're gonna err on the side of discretion, or at least use our best discretion, considering the geography of the town being a popular area, more rural areas, I think that the animal control officer would use discretion.
I was gonna make another suggestion as a compromise. How about the dog shall be upon a physical leash or otherwise under the control or supervision of the owner, keeper, or person having charge? That'll allow a lot of discretion. I think most people would agree that a pit bull should be on a leash. But if you saw a toy poodle, you'd figure, you know, who cares? Let it run around. That would give the officer the discretion, but you wouldn't, because at least according to the way this, the ordinance is being proposed, anytime the dog isn't on a physical leash, the officer now has to investigate and make a decision whether to impound the dog. I'm just broadening physical leash to include otherwise under the control or supervision of the owner, keeper, or person in charge, and allow them to make discretion depending on, for example, just the breed of the dog.
Respectfully, I don't agree with you. I think that there should be a leash law, and that the officer's discretion, whether there's some, if it was a toy poodle, as you're saying, or a particular breed that was a concern, I think the officer would use his best discretion. We currently have no leash law whatsoever. I'm sure that an officer, someone was exercising a lab somewhere in a field or in a common area, that they would use that discretion. I don't see, I don't see it being overly enforced. I just don't, because currently, we have no leash law whatsoever.
So we do change the shall to may, and that'll get the discretion in even with the leash.
I think, yes, absolutely.
I'm happy.
Okay. Ms. Cook?
Remember, I got three dogs.
I walked them with.
And you need a leash on them.
Yeah.
Hi, my name's Donna Cook, and I'm just gonna speak to when I go for a walk with my grandchildren and some of the problems we've run into. We go to Whitemore Woods, and people have a large dog, and they're just walking with the dog. Well, the dog takes off towards us. We don't know the dog. The dog's big. The kids get frightened, and they're not listening to the owner. They're, it's running towards us, and we're all standing there. What's gonna happen? You know, and then sometimes you have your dog on a leash, and I've had, I've got a dog running at me, and I have to pick the dog up, and I, sometimes I've got the dog over my head, the dog's trying to get the dog. You know, and it's like, and what's the person, oh, but it's a friendly dog. And I'm like, are you kidding me? So I'm not, I am not for any dog being off a leash, because I have been frightened many times. I see a dog, and I'm with a dog, and I'm just going, oh, my God, what's gonna happen? You can see the dog's gonna start running. It's not listening to the master at all. Now what do you do? All I can do is pick the dog up and put it over my head.
Well, Mrs. Cook, the language I think we just agreed on should cover your situation exactly.
But you sounded like, well, as long as.
I compromised, and I said, we'll keep the leash idea in with the word may substituted for shall.
So we're gonna have a leash law?
If the council so deems so, but the officer will use his discretion. I understand what you're saying, that some would not like dogs at all. So I understand your thoughts.
No, we like the dogs.
I understand, but some people may not, and they would be intimidated by a large dog, friendly or no. So I think I understand, and I think that Mr. Lambert made that point, that if my officer uses discretion.
But there's a lot of that going on in Whitemore Woods. The dog is free to roam, and the, I mean, the dog is running at you, and you're like, oh, my God, what's it gonna do? You know, like, you know, and I've got five kids with me, and this dog's running at me, and the owner goes, the kids are all like frightened, and all the.
We will try to address the issue on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, well, you're in the woods, who do you?
Well, then we have to, then we try to ask who the owner of the dog was, and speak with that dog, and find out what's going on.
I don't know who they are. All they go is, oh, they're a friendly dog. Yeah, is it biting my neck or something? You know, I don't know who they are. I don't know the.
Well, hopefully, if this passes, that will address, at least, we will have a leash law in town.
I mean, in that situation, there would still need to be some trigger to alert, I mean, we're not going to have the animal control officer paroling Whitemore Woods on a daily basis to, you know, hunt down dogs. So that would, that responsibility would fall upon an individual who felt that, you know, a complaint was required and action needed to be taken.
And they're also running loose at town farm, too. And then they, they do their business, and then what do I see coming? Kids are gonna play in the field. They don't even clean it up, they just leave it there. So some kid just slide into it.
There is, there is an ordinance on the books now that they're not supposed to be, and the officer is, and the officer is up there, he is up there as much as he can be. And we do have a person, if you happen to be out in the woods and a problem does exist, if you notify, as we'll try to determine who the animal is. We, you know, we do have pets, I have a pet lover as well, so, but trying to cover all areas.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, no.
I have two comments, one in support of the chief. I have walked dogs in Tiverton for over 30 years, and there are only two things that give you a sense of security when you're walking a dog. One is a leash on the other dog that's coming towards you, and the other is a can of halt. Because even with the leash, it doesn't always work. There are many dog owners out there who look at their big dog and say, he's perfectly obeyed, which he is, until he sees the little miniature schnauzer coming around the corner and decides to attack him. So.
We're agreeing with that.
Right. I'm just backing up the chief with some evidence over 30 years of experience. The other thing is a, is a comment on Mr. Pelletier's idea. We can't have the police policing every area in town, that's true. But I think it would be a good idea, once in a while, to have the dog officer take four hours out of his schedule and put it on a weekend somewhere, once a month. I've suggested that for the last 20 years and gotten nowhere. Because I think four hours out of his schedule once a month would assure people that, gee whiz, there is a chance of getting caught by the dog officer other than during banker's hours.
If I may respond to that, not to prolong this, I have taken the dog officer and used him on the park on weekends occasionally. I also use my dog officer for dispatch as well, so he's multi-talented, if you will.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The other question, is a question, according to 10-33B, since a person can pick up a dog after paying the boarding fee only without paying the fine, how is the fine collected?
Fine is issued by the animal control officer.
But he can, the person can pick up a dog without paying the fine?
No, sir.
Well, that's what 10-33B states.
I'd have to read it to clarify. If, in fact, you could pick up the dog, we would rather release the dog rather than pay, it could still be fined or summoned by court, issued a summons to come in court or pay your fine by mail. It doesn't have to be done forthwith.
So the person can really pick up the dog?
We would encourage you to pick up your dog, because we don't wanna board it or let it go back with its proper owner. Yes.
All right, I just think it's kinda strange, because.
If my understanding is correct, the fine, even if the fine is issued, it can be mailed in. So. So in essence, someone could go and get their dog, pay for their boarding before that fine actually arrived at the...
The dog could actually be picked up for a violation, given back to the owner on site, and still be a fine subdued, could be assessed.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Briefly.
A lot of this leash law thing could be solved with a dog park. And as you know, Placing Park has tried to get one going. We would definitely help with the financing of it. The dogs could be free. And we do have shown our good faith by putting in the poop stations, paying for the cleanup every week of them and all that. That's why I bake all the cookies for the sale of coastal roasters and all that. So I think that we could work with the town and realize a dog park and anyone who wants their dog off-leash for exercise could utilize that, and I'm delighted to offer.
Mr. President?
Talk to Mr. Bellucci about the landfill in five years. I think there's about 130 acres up there.
But it's, we have, I mean, some of the former town managers have been open-minded about it. It's just that we don't seem to get them all together.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Before you go ahead and go forward with the vote, just an opinion from the solicitors here. If you change the wording to may, it's my opinion that that would make this unduly vague. You can't say may without telling them the circumstances under which it would or wouldn't happen. It wouldn't put the person sufficiently on notice. And just like any other violation that's contained in an ordinance such as a speed limit, it's something that the officer at the time and as the chief articulated, there's a discretion on a case-by-case basis. That really rests within the discretion of the officer at the time rather than in the wording of the ordinance. I think if you change this to may instead of shall without telling the person, the individual at large, what those, that may circumstance would be, it would render this unduly vague.
Well, unfortunately, I'm applying the same discretion the officer would use in a motor vehicle accident. He may or may not deem who was at fault speeding, same thing. He may or may not, seatbelt violation, he may or may not issue a citation. Use discretion of a child and did a seatbelt, pulled over, and it was found to be, and it was a corrective action taken by the parent, then he would not issue a citation. Or he could issue a written warning, and that should also be applicable.
I agree, chief, and I think that's in the discretion of the officer rather than the language of the ordinance. Would you agree with that?
I would agree, but I was trying to be...
Understood. I just, I don't want to vote to go forward and then to have a problem with the actual legality of the ordinance later.
And I agree. I think it's up to the discretion of the officer. Obviously, if you're on a small road there when there's no one else around and someone's walking their little toy poodle, you'd say to them, you know, the dog belongs on a leash.
Yeah, and if you were in the north end of town, it's heavily congested or in the schoolyard, it would be more apt to enforce it versus an open field area.
And in all honesty, Mr. President, I'm assuming that if there was an abusive discretion, we'd be, I'd be the first one to hear about it. Somebody on this...
I think you'd be the second one, Mr. Lambert. Thank you.
Okay.
Chief, just one question?
Yes.
On physical leash, did you also consider an electronic dog collar?
No, I actually did, was kind of shied away from that or even the electrical fences, simply because, you know, it opens up a whole new area of someone seeing something or proving that something is operating and testing things. So a physical leash, I think, is more applicable and is visible. It's not going to, you're not going to interact with the person to start questioning that.
Thank you.
Anything else from the public? Anything else from the public? Anything else from the public? Okay, seeing none. Anything else from the council?
No.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve the changes to Code of Ordinance, Chapter 10, Article 2, Division 1, Section 1033, Dogs at Large, as drafted.
Here we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The ordinance passes. Continuing public hearing. Public hearing on proposed town code changes to Chapter 42, Fire Prevention and Protection, amended to adding new Section 42-2 to provide for the collection of fees for certain fire safety inspections and re-inspections as provided for in the Rhode Island general laws. Chief?
Part of what we were asking for is that instead of having to have them put out in our ordinance all the time and every time there's a change upstate, then we come back and we have another change here and another public hearing. We're able to charge with the state, so we're trying to just reflect and make our ordinances easier by reflecting what is in the state fire code. Trying to mirror it.
All right, this being a public hearing, is there anything from the public?
I did have one question. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay.
Anything else? Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, councilors.
I did have one question because somebody did call me about this. Actually, you really do get phone calls on some of this stuff. And the question was, it was their understanding that the money goes to fire prevention programs. And the question was, why doesn't this just go into the general fund so that the town, in a sense, the taxpayers, have some discretion in the matter? I couldn't give them an answer. I said, well, maybe it's because of a statute or something.
I'll give you an exact answer. By law, it is supposed to be, it's supposed to stay within the fire department, it's supposed to be used for fire prevention purposes. Our money does go directly into the general fund.
Okay. Yep. Good. Okay. I met my responsibility to the constituent, and that's a good answer. Thank you.
Part of the explanation of that is, and I'm not sure of the legality, I can just give you the explanation I had on it, was that because the town does put in money for fire prevention activities, that they are allowed to keep that money. People may have differing opinion, but this is the way it was explained to me. But that money goes back into the general fund to offset the expense that the town has already put forward to fire prevention.
Anything else from the council? Missed anything, Mr. Senza?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the ordinance in number 2013, Chapter 42, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 1 in General, Section 42-2, as drafted.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor? The ordinance is carried.
Thank you.
Continuing in public hearing. Public hearing on fees and fines resolution, proposed amendments pursuant to Code of Ordinance, Section 2-1, Fees and Fines. This is a public hearing. Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, councilors.
Are we talking about the whole fee schedule here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
One of the things I don't see on here, which I'm trying to figure out how to address, are the non-resident beach fees that are paid. And I don't see that on here. Should it be on here?
No, that comes under...
I think Mr. Gonzo can address it, but it was addressed with the recreation that would bring it forward if, and Jim, you know, with that stance of that, but that doesn't stop a councilor from bringing it forward.
Okay.
Why isn't it on the main list? Is it not a...
Because Mr. Gerlach's request was to send it to the recreation department, and we so did.
Recreation decided that they'd like to keep it the same. Okay.
But that doesn't stop you from doing that, because remember, your fee resolution, that's why we pulled the fees out of the ordinances, so that this can be amended at any time you want to amend it. And each time, you get in the whole package, you can see the top is...
Sure.
...amended this time. So you, as a councilor, can bring that forward and suggest to come forward. Your request was to send the letter, which we did all back...
Absolutely.
...to recreation. They voted on it and did not recommend.
Okay.
Now it's up to you to say if you can...
Would that be part of this discussion or a new agenda item?
It wasn't advertised on this. I can advertise that specific request. We can have it on the next one.
Okay.
We only need 10 days advertising.
I'm confused. Can I just pause for a second? So we requested of the recreation commission what? An update or what the status of their beach fees were?
I can elaborate here. So I did a little benchmarking research to look at the non-resident beach fees that are within surrounding communities. Our non-resident beach fee is $5 per visit. Surrounding communities have non-resident beach fees anywhere from $10 to $20. Sometimes it's a sliding scale where it's lower during the week, higher on the weekends. And so it was my feeling, as I frequent the beaches here in town, in particular Foglin, that we're seeing a lot of out-of-state plates coming in on a daily, if not weekly, basis during the summer months, and there's no way to account for that usage. And I think that if we could bring our out-of-state, or not, sorry, non-resident beach fees in line with surrounding communities, it would be a good thing to raise revenue, perhaps provide for additional infrastructure at the beaches to handle such things as trash, you know, so on and so forth. And, you know, I think that we should look at fees for, you know, what we're doing with campers. And again, a lot of RVs that are coming in are plated from out-of-state. So I had asked the recreation commission to take a look at that. Unfortunately, you know, I've never been able to meet directly with them, and I respect their judgment on it, but, you know, I think it's definitely, it warrants a broader conversation.
So my follow-up to that is, if this is a list of all of our fines and fees, why don't we keep it, why is that the one that's not on here? Why is that the one that's independent of this list?
Well, these were fines and fees that came from the ordinances. Maybe, I guess we just never added it to that. Well, we certainly should. But I do want to say, I made several attempts to get the recreation to address it, and they responded continually that they were not going to.
Did they address it at a meeting?
Yes.
At a meeting, yes.
Yes. My understanding is that they did at a meeting.
I don't remember seeing it in the minutes, and that's fine. That's fine.
I was getting 5 minutes from them for a couple of minutes. We have some problems with that.
So, well, obviously, if it is a fee being charged by the town, it should be in this...
Right. I'm sure there are other fees as well that aren't in here. This really originated from pulling everything out of the ordinances, that it feasts by way of ordinances, and maybe that one was never in it.
This one just doesn't have an ordinance, maybe.
But we can, you know, I'll work with this list and try and do them. And then, Mr. Gerlach, I would suggest you just send me in...
Sure. You'll have it tomorrow.
...the ones you want, and we will advertise for them, or if there's anybody else with any...
Yeah.
And I will talk to the recreation commission.
Can we be so bold as to encourage you, Jim, to get something in writing or, just so we know what fees we're charging, what this protocol is? We have any way of addressing RVs and, you know, because it'd be nice to contextualize this in the conversation of raising fees to support trash collection and disposal and cleanup efforts and park benches and the things that are at the beaches.
I can do that.
Because right now, we're kind of poking it in air. Thank you.
By the way, the recreation commission is scheduled to be on your April 8 meeting, your next meeting. We might have to address it.
Well, that's convenient.
One might think it would be wise for them to prepare for that meeting.
Yeah.
And I'll submit an agenda item with the benchmarking research that I compiled as backup.
Does councilor want to go ahead and advertise it so it's ready for...
Sure.
Yeah, we'll have to. Yeah, so we'll have the answer for the 8th.
All right, any questions regarding the current?
I have a couple, if Bill's done. I don't know if you want to go around the table, but I just flagged a few. One of them was page 2, chapter, first one, Chapter 14, Section 14, 195, Boats and Waterways, Marine Toilet and Sewerage Discharge. And it just has a notation that it's established by the council. I don't know what that means. I presume that is the $25 fee, like we charge speeders on waterways for a first offense. But when we were talking about this issue not too long ago, we all sort of thought that disposal of sewage and toilets, plural toilets, into the waterways was a little bit more offensive than a speeding violation. So the first question is, what is the fee? Is it the $25 per first offense, 50 second, 100 third?
I think some of them, the solicitor bet in there because you would be continually changing them. So I know there were some that he put like that, that the council could establish, because either it was not an established fee at the time or something that they were contemplating bringing in. So I think it's going to have to be Andy's...
Yeah, okay, I think it's, it is the 25, 50, 100, but I'm not an expert on that, on that section of the charter. But I would respectfully suggest we consider strongly increasing that. I would support that. I mean, that's a pretty big offense.
Well, I would think so, that we need to look at that, but I would think we should discuss that with the Haba Commission and see what our sister towns are doing.
That's fine. You know, I'm happy to listen to...
Because I think that within their proposal, I thought they had that in there, what their fines or fees were.
Yeah. I, like I said, I'm not 100% sure, but I'm 99% sure. It's 25, 50, 100. First offense, second offense, third offense, just like it is if you're speeding at no greater than 10 miles an hour over the limit and causing a wake that does not exceed or damage or whatever it is. Actually, you're fined more if you create a wake without damage or personal injury, which seems kind of ridiculous in the scheme of things. So it should at least be at the benchmark of causing a little bit of waves without any damage or injury at a minimum.
I will discuss that with the Haba Commission.
Wonderful.
Any others?
Yeah. Yeah. I think I have... No, I think that's it. Oh, I'm sorry, no. The cemetery commission plot.
Page.
Page 10, three quarters of the way down. Is that what the cemetery commission review that on a regular basis or is that something that's just been $400 forever or what? Do they increase it?
It was about two years ago they had an increase on that. And what they're supposed to be doing is weighing the costs of the maintenance and everything, and they do. Would you like me to have, have to review it? By the way, this fee resolution went out to all the department's boards, and if they wanted any change to it, we had to put it in the advertising. Went out not once, but twice. And repeatedly, I checked with them, and the only ones that seemed to come up with anything was the police department on the dogs and the fire.
I'm not saying it's low, but I don't know. I haven't been in the market for a cemetery plot, so I don't really know what they go for.
We did just increase them. I'm going to say about two years ago.
Yeah. And I think that's... Two years ago, it went from 250 to 400. I think that's the going rate.
Is it? Okay.
For a small one.
That's fine.
I'll have them review it. How about that?
Yeah, that'd be nice. Yeah, that'd be nice, and I just, to know, it's nice to know what, what the town cemetery costs and...
Any others?
I just have a clar-- a question, clarity, or seeking clarification. So, top of page seven, chapter seventy-eight, section seventy-eight dash one three two, mini bikes violations. Does this also include all-terrain vehicles like four-wheelers or three-wheelers, not just mini bikes? I don't, I don't know if...
You have to read the whole order.
Oh, okay, never mind, yeah, I'll follow.
I do, because I do want to though make a comment that with the changing in the fees for the fire prevention, we put, as authorized by state fire code, but I'm sure the fire chief will realize he still has to keep submitting to the council so that you're aware of what the fees are and that, as people look towards this tonight, I would find.
All right, Lied, I have one more question. The zoning, same page, page seven, halfway down, zoning article, whatever that is, fifteen, section eight, I just want to know how these numbers for variance appeal and special use permits and things like that, are they based on the cost it takes to bring this thing through a process of the zoning board of appeals and et cetera, et cetera? Or is that just a number that...
I think that's just a number. I don't believe that it has anything to do with cost.
Okay.
Things made high enough so that we don't get frivolous, you know, requests.
Okay.
Anything else?
Can I just add?
Yep.
The actual cost, the advertisement, the notices and all of that isn't separate from the fee.
It's borne by the applicant.
Correct. That's, I, I'm not sure how it works mechanically, but it's either reimbursed or it's paid upfront at the time, not the application or the appeal, the variance, whatever. But the actual cost of the certified mail and things like that are part of what the applicant pays.
Yeah, this is a small graph above, plus a deposit, fee below, plus a deposit of five hundred dollars for cost of advertising, petition notification of abutters, according fees, and stenographic transcript services, and then they refund, they refund you afterwards. I wouldn't, I, I, don't kill yourself, but I, I wouldn't mind knowing kind of how that works, because then I want to make sure we're not... Five hundred dollars plus another two hundred and thirty dollars isn't a deal breaker if you want to add three stories to your house, but it is a deal breaker if you need to put a small addition, or you need a special use permit or a variance for, something that's necessary, and I don't want to disenfranchise people from being able to do those sorts of things because it's going to cost them eight hundred dollars to do something, just to potentially get turned down. Seven hundred and thirty, I'm sorry.
Just for the benefit of the new counselors, the reason you have this fee resolution is because it was done about maybe five years ago, because it was painstaking to, every time you wanted to change any fee, it was all in the ordinances. So, you would have to advertise that ordinance twenty-one days in advance, this, that, and the other, and we had to do it one by one. So, the cost factor is what then Andy just worked out, well, let's just do it all by resolution, which the council can do, we, it's public input, we advertise it, but we only need the ten days, and it, we advertise it all at once, we try to get as many of the departments that want changes at once, and it just cut the cost factor way down, to put it like this. The disadvantage is, you're seeing a resolution on fees, which is all pulled out of ordinances, and you're not seeing the ordinances along with it. But that's where this all came from, and each board, commission, or department really went through them, and we went through them, and we went through them now. They are supposed to at least once a year, in fact, we have an ordinance that says once a year, we will, we, at least once a year, we will revise our fee. So, it is a little difficult, you're not seeing the ordinances to go with them, but that was all done over several meetings to get to this point, so it's easier to change.
Anything else? Okay, I will entertain a motion regarding the resolution, subject to the questions discussed here tonight, that we authorize all except those that were questioned.
We have a list of what those are.
Okay, page two.
You still have to authorize it's here, though.
Yep. Oh, yeah. Actually, we will just, because we can just add them, yeah, we can approve it as it is, and we'll just come back and discuss those. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution. We have a motion.
Second.
A second, all those in favor? Motion carried.
I thought we were only supposed to vote on the, on the proposed amendment.
You approved it as amended, with these two amended on it, the animal fees and the fire. And then, we will present that with those two in it, with Mr. Gerlach, if those have... I won't be able to get what you're looking for, because that's what I think is more advertising than research, for the next meeting. You can always put it on the following one.
That's fine.
Yeah, because we can do that any time. Okay, that will close the public hearing's questions. Appointments and resignations. Interview for Recreation Commission vacancy, advertised three-year term expiring April fifteenth, twenty sixteen. Recreation Commission, John T. Cudaro. Is Mr. Cudaro here?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, and thank you for being so patient and hanging around so long.
Oh, you're welcome.
The viewing audience doesn't have the luxury of having your resume in front of, in front of them, so if you could tell us a little bit about yourself?
Well, I'm a, pretty much a lifelong resident of Tivern, born on Bay Street, moved when I was a youngster over to the Bogomash area. I was briefly living in Fall River when I got married, in an apartment about the size of the bathroom over there, for a couple of years, until I built a house over on Blueberry Lane. Married, raised three children, been married for twenty-five years this year. Just two, three years ago, I left a lifelong career in the distribution industry and went back to school. So, currently, I'm in between being a full-time student and an employed registered nurse. And it's just, I'm hitting that time in my life where it's a little time to give back to the community that, that gave, gave much to, to me and my family. And I think the Recreation Department is a good fit for me, my children were involved in, in youth sports, and I think I can be a benefit to the, to the committee with my, my knowledge of budgeting, not only developing, but implementing and exceeding budgets, staying under my operations budgets, always exceeding my sales budget. I'm already quite involved in fundraising activities here in town through my daughter's Memorial Foundation and through a soccer tournament that we hold annually in conjunction with Tivern Youth Soccer and Soccer Rhode Island. We have, through the soccer tournament, we've given out twelve thousand dollars in scholarships over the last four years. That account currently holds another twelve thousand dollars, actually fourteen thousand dollars, I apologize. Through my daughter's Memorial Foundation, we have raised well over a hundred thousand dollars in the last four years, and have contributed much to organizations that help families facing pediatric cancer. So, I ran a business, I didn't own it, but I ran a distribution centers all across New England. I was kind of the fix-it guy. When there was a distribution center struggling a little bit, I would go there with my operations and sales experience, kind of rejuvenate that facility, and then move on to the next sour apple in the bunch, and try to get that one shined up. And I was, I was involved in every aspect of the business, from, from day-to-day operations to sales, to budgeting, really from soup to nuts.
Thank you. Anything from the council?
I like that Mr. Cudaro was also a frequent customer of Gemon Farms when I worked there.
Hey, if none, I will entertain a motion.
I'd happily make a motion to accept Mr. Cudaro to the position, to fill the vacancy on the Recreation Commission for a three-year term expiring April fifteenth, twenty sixteen.
We have a motion and double seconds. All those in favor? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your interest. Okay, unfinished business, Councilor Gerlach.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, we're here tonight to kind of give an update on where things are at with our efforts to protect the public drinking water supply at Stafford Pond, so I'd just like to kind of just give a kind of brief synopsis of, of activities and kind of what those activities have culminated in, which is what is before us this evening in the form of a proposed ordinance that we would be discussing and looking to take a vote on to move forward to a public hearing. So, in brief, real quick, the Conservation Commission has been doing a fantastic job leading the charge to address water quality issues, longstanding water quality issues with Stafford Pond. Over the last couple of months, we've gained a bit of momentum in this area. This culminated in a face-to-face meeting up in Providence with members of the DEM's Fish and Wildlife Division. We had an individual there from the Department of Health. We had a couple of folks from town here, I attended, Jim, a couple of members of our Conservation Commission, and we had our state legislators there. Frankly, it was a, it was a meeting to put our respective concerns on the table, it was a productive discussion, I think we made our case clear, and this, the next steps coming out of that were to agree to hold a follow-up discussion with the DEM to, to continue our dialogue on how best to move forward to protect the water quality of Stafford Pond. While that's all well and good, it was the feeling of the group of individuals involved in those discussions that the town shouldn't necessarily wait for the DEM to take the lead on this. Now, again, there are multiple issues facing Stafford Pond, it is just not the fishing tournaments at DEM. I think folks know that, you know, Stafford Pond is also a FAA sanctioned sea plan landing location. I mean, there's myriad of issues facing us. However, we thought it prudent to move forward to help reduce the risk of contamination of Tivern's only public water supply by addressing the increased threat that comes with DEM-sponsored and promoted recreational activities in the form of fishing tournaments. This would be a first step, and I'm happy to read the body of the ordinance, if folks would want to hear that, but really just addresses things in the short term while the Conservation Commission is charged with engaging a broader set of stakeholders and delivering a set of recommendations regarding the longer-term protection of Stafford, excuse me, Stafford Pond by October first of this year. So, on the heels of this, I have sent correspondence to DM Director Janet Coit's office requesting a follow-up meeting with herself in attendance, she was not there for the first discussion, with herself, members of the Fish and Wildlife Division, as well as the Office of Water Resources Division, representation from the Department of Health. Our state legislators have been very supportive of this effort, they were there at the first meeting, they have pledged to be there at the second as well. But really, we would like to move forward with advancing this new ordinance to public hearing so that we can address that threat this year, early on in the fishing season, so that we don't lose momentum here. So, I don't know if, should we read this out loud?
We can, but we'd have to make a motion, first of all, to schedule a public hearing. But I did want to ask the solicitor, I'm not sure, probably Andy has looked at it. And, so, yes, so just, Andy has drafted this, and we've gone through several revisions of this.
Okay, and it's, it's my opinion that this does not need to be read word for word, as long as it's part of the record.
Okay, but we do need a motion to schedule a public hearing on April twenty-second, twenty thirteen. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
I really had a question.
Discussion?
I support completely your effort to protect Stafford Pond. Here was the problem I had, where a, it looks like if I was reading this for the first time, my impression would be, what you're trying to do is make it impossible almost for anybody to conduct a fishing, whatever you want to call, what is it called, a fishing tournament? For example, you're requiring a million dollars of insurance as soon as you, if you reach six people, apparently, you're, you're a tournament, you have to have a million dollars' worth of insurance, you'd have to get a special endorsement for that. You have a police detail that would require the police to be there at least two hours before the tournament, during the tournament, an hour after tournament. Now, I'm looking at this, and then there's a proposal that we actually have a prohibition of all fishing tournaments by January first, twenty fourteen. Here was my thought, Bill. On one hand, if I read this, I can't imagine, those would be one, those would be very, very expensive fishes, at the time you complied with all of these requirements. I don't think anybody's actually, would ever have a fishing tournament there, so essentially you prohibited it. But the other thought that I had was, yeah, but suppose you found two hundred people crazy enough to spend this type of money? They'd destroy the Stafford Pond, but there's absolutely nothing you could do to prevent it because they've complied with all of your requirements. I think my thought was, may, you know, is to look toward the prohibition of fishing tournaments as you've proposed here by January twenty, January first, twenty fourteen. I will support you on the permit requirements if, if, if we want to continue on this, you know, this direction. But it just seems to me that effectively what you've done is you've told people, we're never going to allow fishing tournaments. Well, then, just say that, or if I miss something.
No, no, Mr. Lied, I think your points are very well taken, and it's important to note that, that we are not necessarily stating that we are going to prohibit all fishing tournaments as of January first, twenty fourteen. That would be a consideration that the Conservation Commission, undergoing its, its longer-term analysis and recommendation, one possible option that they would consider. The rationale for the amount on the insurance is really, you know, we're really trying to make sure that there is adequate protection if there was a catastrophic accident in the pond. It's important to note that Stone Bridge Fire District, their facilities do not have the capabilities to currently filter and clean the water for inorganic matter, so that's gasoline, oil, so on and so forth. They are only capable of filtering for organic matter, sediment, what, what have you. And so, if there was an, an accident that caused catastrophic impact to the drinking water supply at Stafford Pond, we have thousands of residents who are at risk of not having drinking water. And so, insurance up to that amount really drives home two things. First is that it... First is that it really conveys the importance of this and the potential risk. But frankly, if something were to happen and we were needed to institute some sort of emergency-type, you know, fix to ensure a steady water supply, drinking water supply to thousands of people in Tivenan, that there was money available to do that.
Well, is it your understanding, Mr. Gerlach, that as a town, we could prohibit tournament fishing? Could we do that?
If I can, if I can just jump in a second. And I think the solicitor will bear with me that we can put this ordinance, but the ownership and the control of Stafford Pond is what is in question. And my understanding is that the waterway belongs to the state.
I think that's correct.
Right, so this ordinance could be a little gray to begin with. So, I mean, that's something that we'll have to discuss, but I think that's what needs, that's what needs to be clarified. And again, I'm no legal scholar, but I think we own the bottom of the water, but we don't own the waters up.
When you're talking about water ownership, is a gray area, but I can say that DEM can regulate that body of water, but so can the town. Because it is located in the town, and there are certain municipalities that do prohibit all uses on drinking water, and that's perfectly legal.
Right, but that's usually in conjunction with DEF.
I believe DEM would have to be on board, yes. But it's certainly something that can be done, and it's within the town's jurisdiction to initiate that and to implement that.
Well, I'm going to support this, but as I say, my suggestion would be to head into the direction of an absolute prohibition. In all honesty, if I was a fisherman, and I'm not, I would look at this ordinance for permits and I'd say, I'm going to South Wartup upon. I wouldn't, you know, the cost is, if you begin figuring out what the cost would be to an average fisherman, you're talking about a couple of hundred dollars a fish.
But let's move this along. That will all be under discussion on the open, on the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Who's unanimous?
It was unanimous because Mr. Lambert did.
Yeah, no, I'm joined in.
And so, just to be clear, this will be scheduled for public hearing.
April 22nd.
April 22nd, and that will be advertised as per.
Yep. Correct. Okay. Proposal on amending no parking from south intersection of Stafford Road and Old Stafford Road northerly to 1.50 feet south of pole number 943, approximately adjacent to number 997 Old Stafford Road. Scheduling for public here on April 22nd.
So, again, just some additional background here. Part of the issues that have been documented with the sponsored fishing tournaments is that there are so many boats participating that there's not enough parking. And so, that overflows into the streets, creating issues with passing traffic, potential access by emergency vehicles. So.
Where is Old Stafford?
Old Stafford is on the, where these, by East Bay Community Action Program.
Yeah, the old Dairy Dip. Len Mauser level is called Dairy Dip.
Sorry, I had a.
Okay. Any discussion?
I have just one item. Last meeting, I made a notation to Andy that the Barker School hasn't been called the Barker School since I've been alive. It's the senior center. And this, it was the west entrance of Route 24 from Main Ro, to Main Road on Evans Avenue. That no longer exists, but he replaced it with Main Road West to Riverside Drive, and I don't believe the no parking zone goes down all the way to Riverside Drive. I think it stops at Central Avenue, so I just figured we would get that right.
Where are you reading that?
It's the first page.
Evans Avenue South.
Quarter of the way down. It's the only other one that was changed. Evans Avenue South from Main Road West to Riverside Drive, crossed out entrance to Route 24.
Okay, and what is your question?
There used to be an on-ramp at Central Avenue. It's been eliminated.
Yes.
But in its place, Andy has put in Riverside Drive, but that is geographically much further down than Central Avenue. So, I didn't want to all of a sudden now say that the bottom half of Evans Avenue is, was formerly, you could park on it, but now you can't. We're essentially changing the goalpost back, and I want to make sure that's what we meant to do and not just an oversight of geography.
I am not sure about that.
Okay, because people do park on Evans in the second half.
I do know that the reason that this is, has been changed just for that, because the Central Avenue on-ramp is gone.
Right.
But I don't have an answer for that question.
Okay, but so logically, we would just replace that Central Avenue on-ramp to Central Avenue, because Central Avenue still exists, just no ramp that goes up to 24.
Instead of Riverside Drive, it should be Central Avenue.
Okay.
I think what possibly the motive there was, once you go below, it gets curvy. You know, I mean, it's a straight stretch, but then when you get to the bottom of Evans, it gets very curvy and downhill-y.
Yeah, I just, but this is a definite departure from what was.
Yes.
So, I just want to make sure we're doing that on purpose and, anyway.
So, you want me to change it to Central Ave. for the advertising?
If the council agrees. I just think it was generally, generally an oversight.
Yeah, that's fine by me. Any objections?
I agree with Brett.
Any objections?
Do you want to change that back to Central?
Just to Central Ave. It was never, it was the, it was the west entrance of Route 24. I don't even know what that means, but faced south, and it was the west entrance.
Okay.
So, we need to, do you need a motion to schedule that for the 22nd? I would happily move that we schedule a proposed ordinance amending no parking from all that jazz for April 22nd.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Town Administrator.
At a previous meeting, we introduced the revised model contract, and the council had two changes which they recommended. And they, the first change was on number 16. The council recommended changing resignation to termination. And then, number 18, the employee becoming at will be changed to an extension of the contract for a period of 120 days. So, with those changes, I would request that the council approve this contract at this point, unless you have further comments.
Okay, any discussion?
Well, department heads, are they fine with the changes? Was there any discussion about that?
They were here at the last meeting, and, you know, this was gone before them, before the last meeting. They were part of the generation of this.
So, is there no further objections to any language currently?
Not that I'm aware of.
Have they seen this draft? Have the administrators seen this draft?
I believe they have. I believe I forwarded to them, but it's been a month or so, so I can't recall, but.
Have you received this draft?
I did receive it. Yeah, okay.
Any other?
It looks like there were a couple of other changes we just inserted, just so I can make sure we're all working from the same book. Inserted the language that Council Shabbat requested regarding the old expense reimbursement clause in the whole contract. And we had three days of absence instead of five with a doctor, for a doctor's note or a physician's certificate, just so that we're all.
Yeah, those are in there.
That was, those were the other red line changes.
Yeah, that's the only other changes I recall.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Seeing no more discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the revised model contract as presented in Agenda Item E2.
Here we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Hey, Town Administrator. Approval of advertising a job description for position of Town Planner, planning board memorandum as to the role of Town Planner.
At the previous council meeting, there were some comments on what was presented. One of the items was Mr. Counselor Gerlach's suggestion, which is on page two of the, or it's under qualifications. It's the third paragraph. Demonstrated experience working with the public to solicit input and collaborate on planning-related projects of varying size and scope. That's been inserted. And I did get, I was able to get a copy of the planner's job description from Portsmouth and from Newport. Unable to get it from Middletown. And theirs resembles ours very closely. There are no outstanding items in theirs that are not in ours. They're pretty much all generic. And one thing I might mention is that in the first paragraph, where we talk about an American Institute of Certified Planner Certificate is desired, a lot of the other, or the others that I was able to view indicated that it was not desired, but as long as the applicant was able to achieve that, that it would be sufficient. So, we have a little, you know, leeway there. Additionally, our former planner was not AICP certified. Okay, and what we did was we hired him and gave him an opportunity to become certified.
Again, maybe it's just me. I thought we had said that the AICP certification, if they didn't have it, that they could get it within a limited time period, i.e.
And that's what we would do.
Right, but I think, I think it should be stated, because what you're saying is desired. It kind of says, eh, you know. So, I think, you know, if they don't have the certification, then they have up till three months or six months, whatever longer it takes for them to acquire.
We can make that modification.
And I'm not sure, you know, the length of time for that certification.
Yeah, generally, I think it would be longer than that.
Kate, do you have any idea? Kate, do you have any idea?
Well, it's a matter of city for an exam, and it depends on what kind of year you register for that exam. It's kind of like bar exams, where you have to get a deadline registration and asking. So, I would say 12 months would probably be enough.
Yeah, because depending on when they came on board, they could have just missed the last one, whatever.
We gave the previous planner a year to become certified.
Yeah, I, my suggestion is that we add that in, that the AICP, if not already attained, that they have 12 months to get that certification. From the date of hire.
It would be a term of contract, I think, right?
Yes.
Did Andy review this at all to add a flair of, do you want to say "claw"? I don't know. Because Andy, I know Andy's an AICP certified planner.
Right.
Half of his offices.
Right, I don't recall whether I, I don't think I've sent this to him. I can send it to him again. I'll send it to him.
I made the mention last time about this area of study, and it's not a deal breaker, but I would reiterate that some additional language about, I guess my, my, the thesis of my argument is that, you know, if you're AICP certified and you don't have a bachelor's degree in planning, it's not necessarily a deal breaker. If you have the requisite skills and, you know, graduate studies or whatever it is, I just don't want to turn or dissuade someone from applying because they don't have a very specific bachelor's degree. Do I, I mean, you could study architecture at the undergraduate level and then get a, you know.
And pass the AICP.
City planning and get an AICP certification, and according to our requirements, you couldn't get the job.
Well, yeah, I think that plus the requisite experience, you know. Sure. I think graduation from an accredited college with BA or a BS in planning or a closely-related field.
That's right, yes.
Well, I think at that point, I mean, you're reviewing resumes that are coming in, and you can probably make a judgment call either way.
Right. And it's indicating preferred rather than required.
Right.
Okay, if you, if that's fine?
Just a reminder, the Personnel Board takes this literally, and they will develop a matrix literally, so they can check off the box that said BA in planning or closely-related field, yes or no. So, if there was a degree in fashion design, that's not a closely-related field, and that would eliminate that application. They're very, they're very specific to what is in the advertisement. Similarly, if the salary requirements must be included for consideration, if they don't include their salary requirement, that application is eliminated. So, it's very specific. They take this and break this document down into a matrix, and then check off the boxes as they review each application. So, you have, if, you have to put in here what you want, and if it varies from that, they'll eliminate that application. So, it's not as like you see all the applications. They'll weed down all the applications they have to three or five. So, this has to be very specific to what you want.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree and reiterate that I'm not concerned about our, you know, rubric for determining what we, I'm worried about, like Council Shabbat said, and also dissuading qualified candidates from applying just because they think they don't meet our very specific. And planning is, is, I don't know, it's just, you don't often see it cut as cleanly as that. And if, and if we're talking about folks who are going to dice this up and say, oop, you don't have, you don't have a bachelor's in planning or a master's in planning, none of our candidates could have a specific degree that is, that is, it might be something else. And I don't know what amount of diligence the.
Yeah, and it also says closely-related field, so what does that mean? So, right.
But how would you change it?
Well, I sat on the Personnel Board, not in this town, but in another one, and closely-related field is broad enough, I would hope, that anyone in the planning board would know that would mean someone who had urban planning, architect, construction, all those related fields that have to do with building and engineering and so forth. So, I think otherwise, you're just going to say graduation from an accredited college or university with a BA or a BS, and a master's degree is preferred. And that leaves it wide open, as you say, somebody with a master's degree in ballet, but has passed the AICP could become the planner. but has passed the AICP could become the planner. So I, I think related field is.
I mean, if they can pass the AICP with a, with a bachelor's degree in ballet, I mean.
They can dance around anything.
I mean, I want to cast a wide net, and I also don't want to leave this up to just if there's an arbitrary checking the box, eliminating a candidate who otherwise would be a successful employee of the town of Tiverton. So I don't have.
I think that in combination with the position requirements, they should be able to, and, you know, we may have someone in there, you know, if, you know, myself or Steve Hughes may be in the initial interview.
I want to make sure qualified candidates actually make it to the initial interview.
Brett, could I, would you be willing to help Jim wordsmith that section there?
Well, Andy actually.
Andy is a certified planner.
Yeah, I would suggest we send it to Andy, have Andy take a look at it, and have him, you know.
Okay.
Add some qualifications you feel that would be pertinent.
Mr. President, sometimes what you see at the bottom is relevant work experience may be considered in lieu of any of the above requirements.
Yep.
And that way, you don't have to craft something that's bright, wide enough and narrow enough to get qualified people, but it allows you the discretion to say, well, even though they have a ballet degree, they worked for 20 years as a planner and have the relevant, and just kind of a sentence at the end gives you that leeway. And then it's just a matter, to go to Councilwoman Shabbat's comment, it's a matter of simply informing and educating the personnel committee, that that is something that the council wants to include a broader range rather than narrow range. And you can just, that's something you can do.
Well, I'd add a minimum change with a B A, I'd add or B S.
I'm not even going to touch that, Joan.
Yeah, because it's not on the front, it's in the.
It's not in the advertisement.
It's in the other one, but it's not in the bad advertiser on the front.
And my other, only, other comment is on, the first sentence of the advertisement, it says to assist the planning commission? I thought it was the planning board.
Planning board.
So do we want to see this one more time before it goes out?
Yeah, we're gonna, Jim's going to give it to Andy to, to look at and tweak it before we approve the advertising, along with the qualifications.
Mr. President, one more comment. I know that Andy was planning to ask the council if they wanted this posted. He's going to the American Certified Planners Convention in Chicago the week of April 15th, and he was going to bring this and distribute it. They have a website, so I might suggest that any changes be made for the next meeting.
Absolutely. Which is the 8th?
Which is the 8th, and that would allow enough time.
Which, which might require us to push the application deadline out beyond May 1st, if that's a.
Yeah.
Yeah, so maybe May 15th.
Well, we don't have any dates there at this point, but, you know, he is, he is going to, if you look on where it's going to be advertised, it says Providence Journal, Port Daily News, Paul River Herald, American Planning Association, Mass, Rhode Island, and Connecticut Chapitres. And as the solicitor here has indicated, he's going to a seminar in Chicago, I guess it is.
Yes.
And he indicated that he would bring it there as well.
Yeah. I'll get you a couple more, too. If you might.
All right, so if we can get that, Andy, I'm sure he can get it back to us, you know, for the April 8th meeting, and then we'll finalize it and get it advertised. Okay, are we all set on, on that item? So we're not going to prove.